... minutes in the last round of our meeting. The men will stand as a vote. The next time is a time for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, please come forward and state your name and please limit your comments to five minutes. And if it's on the same subject matter, please not repeat what someone else has already said. Yes?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Commissioner Mayor, my name is Ken Green. And I had appeared here a couple of weeks ago, maybe longer than that, three weeks or so. Anyway, it's a reference to the REIT Commission. And I want to thank Commissioner Dale for suggesting that I go down and pick up, if I was interested in what was happening down there, because we were having some issues of getting some answers here. I want to thank you for suggesting maybe I go down and get the financials if that's so interested me. I went down and I've got the last three years. And if you, as Commissioners and Mayor, have not received them, I think before we make any decisions of what's happening there, that it would be a good idea to go down and see what's taking place there. I also received the audits from Louis Hooper and Dick. And it's pretty alarming. So I just hope that in the next few weeks, and I know that there's a study that's being done, that we do the right thing. I read in last week's paper, and I know you said I shouldn't trust the paper, but that's where I get it. You know? So anyway, the paper suggested that maybe we add a dollar to the people using the pool. The pool, I don't think's our issue when you see this. I think of all the little kids that are down there, that, you know what? That that's their family entertainment, who have families. Start adding a dollar to that to come up with $23,000. I don't think that's it. I don't think doing away with whistles at 300 bucks is it. I don't think of having the lifeguards swimwear of $900. I think we know where the problem is at. And I just hope that after, if you haven't received the financials and haven't looked at them, I hope that you look at those, every one of you, and decide then of what is the right decision. And Commissioner Dale, what you pray, just then, that we have the strength and the wisdom to do the right things. Because a city found upon righteousness is what's going to stand. And I think that that's what we need to do. But I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kenny, for taking an interest in our community.
Thanks.
I don't see anybody else standing up, so I guess it's my turn. I was here last...
Say your name, please.
Kay Gillespie. I'm kind of in charge of the TNR program, the Trap, Nuders, Release for the Community Cats. I've given you some information. I gave you some pictures to pass around that shows the actual area where one of the colonies that we've done, where they live, where they eat, where they drink, to show you that it's a very clean area. Cats are clean animals. I've also given you a copy of a letter from Brenda Reeve. She and her husband, Lee, have donated to our program, are totally behind it. And she wanted to be here today, but had to be out of town, so she sent a letter instead. I've also brought you some information about Disneyland. Disneyland has had basically a TNR program since 1955. They now have approximately, they estimate, 200 cats on the property. The cats have all been fixed, had their shots. They hide in the daytime. Somebody will occasionally see one hiding underneath a bush or something. But they come out at night when all the people enjoying all the rides leave and the people that work there feed them, take care of them. And they brought you a picture of Walt with one of the cats. And there's an explanation of the program attached to you. Another thing I brought is a copy of an ordinance from Newton, Kansas, because they just approved the TNR program in September. So this shows you exactly what they've put in their ordinance. I can't say, after reading all of it, that I completely agree 100% with everything that they're doing, but it's definitely a big step in the right direction, I believe. I've also been asked to go over the actual steps that we go through when we trap community cat. First of all, I or somebody with the Humane Society will get a phone call, tell them that they have some cats in their area that need to be trapped and so forth. When weather permits and as long as we have the funds to do so, we will go trap those cats. We place the trap and either the person who lives there who made the call or some of us will monitor those traps to get the cats out of the weather as soon as possible. But again, we're not going to do it if it's like this. We're not going to take a chance on freezing them to death or whatever. The cat is then taken in the trap to the vet's office. Depending on which office we take it to, one office has, I don't know any other way to say it, they have a little kind of gas chamber in a box that they lower the whole trap down into. Give them just enough gas to make them manageable. Then take the cat out of the trap and give it the amount of sedative that they give for surgery. They spay or neuter them. Give them their rabies shot, give them the combo shot. Worm them, treat them for ear mites, and then tip the ear. And that ear tip, the left ear, just the tip of the left ear is taken off. And that's kind of a universal sign that that cat has been TNR. And TNR is not just in the United States. There are whole countries that have gone TNR countrywide. So when I say it's universal, it's not just... Everybody see that? And the procedure then is that I also deliver a... Oh, forgot to cover the other vet's office. They put a bag, open the trap, tip it, open the door, let the cat slide into the bag, pull the drawstring so it's trapped in the bag. He then gives it a shot through the bag. And so then he takes it out and does everything. I take an empty cage and they put the cat back in that empty cage after it's done. Late afternoon, I come pick them up after they've started to wake up. I keep them overnight at least to be sure that all the anesthetic wears off and they don't have any surgical issues. And then I load them back up. The next day, I load them back up and take them back home where they were trapped in the first place. If they have any type of medical problem, we also treat that. If they have to be on antibiotics, I'll keep them that week and a half or so until the medicine runs out. Once they're healthy, we take them back.
Okay, your five minutes is up. I just want to let you know that at the last meeting, we agreed to move on to look at maybe amending the ordinance and stuff. So we are looking at that and we'll have that on the agenda in some future meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Deborah Brundard. I've been in this town 28 years. And I got involved with the Trap, Nuders, Release Program a couple of years ago with Kay. She's not the only person working on it, although she is the one that is in front and she catches a lot of the flak. She hears a lot of the screaming from people who think we should just kill all the wild cats in town. I totally disagree. I help her. I'm out there doing the grunt work right along with her, picking up the cats in the traps, taking them to the vet. We have several people that help hold those kitties in nice, warm places. It may be a garage that's heated or a shed that's heated, but they're watched while they are coming out of that anesthesia. I've already seen the good part that we have several mama kitties that no longer have babies. We need to keep doing this program so that we don't have all these new kittens being born all over town, being born outside. And the worst part, people discovering dead kittens under their tree or something because they starved to death or they got that virus and they couldn't smell where mama was and couldn't get their nutrition. That is a huge part of controlling the cats in this town. I grew up in Baltimore City, Maryland, where they disposed of all of the outside cats. And you know what happened next? We had a huge influx of rats and mice. And that is one thing that we're starting to see in town, is more mice. We also have the dirty job of looking at these wild kitties and saying, "This one's too sick." And telling the vet, "Go ahead and put that fourth kitty down." But if it's a healthy cat and we get them taken care of, then let them live. Let them be out there. Let them be your free rodent control. Because they're not costing you any money. They're costing the TNR program. We pay for all of this program. We do the fundraising. My husband and I personally have gone out and done fundraising. We were Santa and Mrs. Claus one day at Tractor Supply. We raised $200 just visiting with the kids and letting mom and dad take pictures. That's quite an amount to raise in one day. So let us do our job as volunteers to this town. We're not asking you for a ton of anything. We're asking you for time, which is free. We're asking you to allow us to do our jobs that we feel responsible to do because we love animals. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie McGee. I'm the Director for the Penny County Humane Society in town. We all agree that the TNR program has really benefited the areas in town that they've started in. For those that haven't, where there's been wild cats that have been removed from the property, the same number of cats that were there, more just showed back up to take their place. So if we get them all fixed and healthy and vaccinated, that would be more beneficial when having sick, unvaccinated, reproducing cats that smell and pee and go all over everything. We also know that there are citizens out there that aren't going to want cats regardless. We'd be happy to go and explain, you know, that more are going to move in if you get rid of these ones. But the Humane Society is also looking into adopting a morns and farms program that if there are those citizens that don't want them in their neighborhood whatsoever, that we would take them to farmers that around in the county that have asked if we have cats for rodent control out there. So if the city doesn't want the free rodent control, we have farmers that are asking for it. Personally, after working at the shelter, I've seen the huge number of cats we have to put down on a daily basis and it's not fun. So if we can get them under control and have less out there running around being reproduced orphaned cats that come in, we won't have as many. We won't have to find as many rescues for these cats or ask as many people to adopt, take them into their home. There's always a huge number amount of cats and there is dogs. Do you consider that?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Miranda Dohtry and I work for Metz and Veterinary Clinic and I am also for the TNR program. We get cats in all the time that are perfectly healthy and we neuter and spay them. And if they are sick, we do get them on antibiotics and send them home. One of the lovely ladies that was just up at your podium. So I'm for it and I just would like to say that I'm here to represent the vet clinic in support of TNR.
Thank you.
I'm Amber Witt. I was a participant. I had four when I moved in to our house two and a half years ago. And they were a constant nuisance because they were spraying all over. We had two females and two males. The females were always in heat and so the males were fighting all the time and causing problems. And I started searching for this. I come across this program, got in contact with Kay and exactly what she said. We trapped them. She took them, took them to the vet, got them fixed. And I still have all four and I have no problems now. They, I provide them a little shelter. Right now, I have them a little heat pad, food, water. And actually, one has started, I'm not a big cat person, but one actually has started to come into the house and is very friendly. For the most part, the three were very friendly. One still won't let us touch her, but she's coming around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those pictures I gave you are from Amber's cats.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
Yeah. Mine's not going to be what you've probably heard already. I've actually been studying this phenomenon for about a decade. My name is Whitney Buckman, obviously I live here in the city. I've actually been studying this from an ecological standpoint, being that most of my knowledge comes from there. At one point in time, I was a TNR proponent. I am not anymore. It was disproven in the early 2000s. I have studies after studies after studies that show that it does not work. There's only one study that all the organizations follow. That study is from Florida. However, the data is flawed because about halfway through the multiple-year process, another organization came and took 80% of the animals that they were studying. So they declared it a drop in population. However, it was a euthanasia adoption program that actually dropped the study. The primary issue that they tend to find is if they study this, when they do more than a three-year study, the population actually increases because there are only two things that are affecting the cat population that are actually controlling it, and that is cold weather and disease. If you research something in biology called a superpopulation, it's what happens when animals have unlimited resources. The only times that they've actually seen this occur is around humanity because we have plenty of garbage, plenty of food. We give out food. This doesn't just happen with cats. What happens with a number of animals. But what they find is that the territory that they claim, in a wild, normal situation, you're fighting for resources. So you have a very large, vast territory because you need that territory to get your resources. Unfortunately, when a superpopulation happens, when there's an unlimited amount of resources, that population actually goes to almost zero. So the idea that taking a cat and neutering it and it's still taking up a part of that population is invalid. It's not, its being there is not controlling a population extent. That's what they found over and over again with these studies. A lot of cities have done it for a number of five years or so, but they usually end up quitting because they tend not afford it. Every mathematical model is somewhere between the range of 71% and 93% of all the cats have to be caught for a TNR program to be effective. Generally, what happens because of the lack, because usually they are vaccinated at the same time, after three years, which is the average feral cat age, after three years, the population actually increases between 20% and 40% from its original when they actually do studies with an initial population and a final population. So unfortunately, while I would love TNR to work, it does not work. My main concerns with it is it is a waste of resources and we can be studying other methods that could potentially be a better effect than TNR. TNR has been disproven for over a decade, but it's just, it's one of those things that just keeps coming around for fighting and fighting and fighting. And another factor is, these are non-native animals. I have a love for animals. I've been part of the Humane Society in the past. I work with animals on a daily basis, but my love for animals doesn't just stop at the domestic. It goes towards, as well, towards the wildlife. The wildlife, they did a study a number, a few years ago. It was very unpopular. In fact, the Humane Society started sending hate mail to the Smithsonian Institute for doing the study. And basically, they put little cameras on cats' collars and over the course of a year or so, they watched what the cats do. They probably paid grad students very little bit of money to watch all that footage and mark what they did. They then took how many kills those outdoor cats are doing, whether they're eating them or not, which most of the times they weren't because they were fully fed by other means. But they are predators, so that's an instinct. They extrapolated that, took the approximate number of cats in the United States and were figuring out how many birds they were killing every year. Anybody have a guess on the number in the United States that feral cats were killing? Hundreds of what?
Hundreds of thousands.
More.
Millions?
More. The estimate came between seven and 12 billion birds every year is what they are doing. And these are actually having a major problem, particularly for people who live in the Midwest Plains regions. A lot of birds have their nests up in a tree, slightly safer from cats. We live in a grassland. That does not work here. A lot of the birds that we find native, the metalarks and things of that nature, they nest on the ground. They become a very main target for a lot of the cats. And in fact, have the bobolink and a number of, which is one of my favorite birds, have had a major problem and one of their main concerns with the ecological studies is feral cat populations. So while I would love to tout TNR, I have yet to find any data that actually claims it is true. I've looked through the resources, a lot of the online resources with, for example, the National Humane Society and a few others, they are circular. If you go through the actual reading, it becomes circular and they're basically referencing each other or they're referencing that one study in Florida.
What do you suggest we do?
Unfortunately, so far, the, honestly, the biggest, the best control that they have so far is still an adoption euthanasia plan. They don't have, yet to find another method. One of my theories on that is because everyone's so hung up on this TNR thing, even though it's been disproven over and over again, that they're not willing to put forth the resources to try something new. The only other option that I've heard that might have a potential, however, it's in the infancy stages of research, is chemical castration, in which case they put poison out that would neuter the cats, which has a much higher chance than having to take them in for surgery methods. However, the chemical method also had the problem of you're putting chemical castration that could potentially affect other species because it's just like putting out rat poison for a lot of animals, except it doesn't kill them, it just makes them sterile. So that would be the only other alternative that I can see, is a chemical control method of that nature. In which case, you're also not, you're getting rid of the disease control component, which while disease can be a factor, unfortunately, in ecology, it is also a population control.
Any other public comment? Okay, we'll move on to item six then, please.
Item 6A, governing body consideration and approval to allow the mayor to proclaim the month of February 2016 as Girl Scout Cookie Month.
There's been a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Item 7A, Public Works Director Curran will provide the governing body a KDOT traffic investigation report for the intersection of K-156 Mary Street and Jenny Barker Road.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. In your packet is the latest traffic signal study conducted at the intersection of K-156 Jenny Barker and Mary. With me here is Larry Thompson from District 6. We're here to kind of answer questions that you have on this study. I'll go real quick through it. They went through the warrants. At this time, no warrants met. So that means no traffic signal at this time. However, the study has been conducted every two years. Or if there's a request from the city or citizens, Larry's been passing those requests up to KDOT's office and they've been conducting those studies. One of the studies, we did meet a little bit, we met half of it for the accidents. However, you still have to meet a certain volume as well. And we did not meet that at this time. One thing that they did do is they reduced the criteria down to 70%, which it helps us out, but we still could not meet the numbers. Larry's here to answer any questions and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
What about the increasing the size of stop signs?
Well, they did make a few recommendations to Larry. One would be to increase the size of the stop sign to 48 by 48. The existing sign there is a 48 by 48. That's the largest sign that you can install. The other recommendation is to put a second sign or another sign on the left side of the road. That is not there at this time. Larry, I believe, is looking into that. And then the third would be put a flashing red light on top. That is there right now as well. So I think we've done a good job to protect the community as best we can until the warrants are met. So Larry's looking into the other stop sign, I believe.
The majority of accidents, are they caused because people are not stopping at the stop sign or they have stopped and made a turn into uncommon traffic? You know, I mean...
Well, there's a comment in the study that indicates that typically it's someone on Jenny Barker who either doesn't stop or stops and doesn't wait for traffic to clear. As far as the two additional stop signs, I've told the area to go ahead and put those up. When Sam and I talked about this, I thought that was outside the city. I figured out later it was inside the city, but I'd already told him we put them up. So we'll put the extra two. You're welcome, Matt. We'll go ahead and put up the extra two stop signs. Plus, the study also recommends we adjust the signing a little bit coming into town. It doesn't change the speed limit. They just adjust the sign spacing and we'll get that taken care of too, once we get away from the snow here.
Thank you.
One thing about the intersection, it is located on the highway system and so any change to the configuration of the intersection or the traffic control devices has to be approved by KDOT. So that warrant is one of those things that they require. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sessna, you had asked me a question that I think Sam will be part of the answer from, which I think you were probably going to say from the end of the meeting, but Sam has to get on the road to address a family matter.
Oh, okay.
If you want to go ahead and ask your question about the, I believe it was the sidewalk on Campus Avenue to Walmart.
To Walmart, yeah.
Status of that project.
I know a couple of years ago, Bill, we were talking about getting that, working with KDOT and we had some funding for that. Somebody asked me the other day, they were just wondering where we were at or when it's going to be put in.
The bike path sidewalk from Campus to Walmart on the north side is under contract and we're just waiting for weather to clear up. And we probably will start that sometime in March if the weather allows us to do that.
Okay. Sam? Thank you.
Item 7B, presentation of the Neighborhood and Development Services 2015 Annual Report. I'll invite Caleb Pintner up to give that report.
Good afternoon. Just a couple of things we want to point out in our annual report, which is where we estimate our population numbers and give the report on where we've been this past year for building permits and so forth. Our January estimate for a January 2016 estimated population for Garden City is at 30,948, which is up by 187 from our last January estimate of 30,761. And so a nice, small amount of growth there that we've seen as far as total population. Also, as we look into our construction activity as the last three years have been three of the biggest years in the last roughly 12 years we've seen in construction activity. And 2015 being the largest for single-family construction since 2002 with 65 new single-family residential... residential units being built, and, which is a significant increase considering our numbers have been in the, in the low teens or below since 2005. And usually, a good barometer of growth and development and healthiness of a community often reflects back on residential growth, and residential builders within our community have been helping meet those needs. And, and the report also contains other information from the other jurisdictions, our other jurisdiction populations that we assist with, our services with the county, and with the City of Holken, as well as their numbers for permits. And I encourage you to look at that over, and if you have any questions about anything, we'd be glad to answer anything that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb.
Item seven C, it's certainly our pleasure to congratulate Cole Wassinger on the occasion of him being named the 2015 American Junior Golf Association Golf Professional of the Year. So congratulations, Cole. I think it's here. The, and item seven D, this is normally a report that's just available in your report, and we don't call much attention to it, but since the monthly financial report from Service and Finance in this packet, I believe represents year-end 2015, Melinda has asked the opportunity to present that to you. So I'll turn it over to Melinda.
First of all, I'd like to say this is unaudited, as it always is in your monthly reports. These are the numbers that are going to the auditors, are going to be arriving next week. So they will take a look at these numbers. We never have had very many adjustments from the auditors after they look at it. So on the front page, I just wanted to call your attention to the 2015 year-to-date actual under General Fund at a glance, we did end up in a positive position, revenues less expenses, $48,550. That's always a good indicator of how well we've done for the year. You can look at your utility revenues at a glance, and as you can tell, a few of the revenues are down from 2014, and a couple of them are up, so those are, you just need to keep those in mind as we go into budget season here for 2016, 2017. The selected revenues at a glance under the General Fund, this is the, as I think you've noted in past meetings, the largest year for city sales tax, at a little over 6.4 million. County sales tax, that's another good-sized number, that's been the largest that we've had, at 3.7. Building permits this year far exceeded 2014. We're looking at $412,000 this year, and that does not include the DFA permitting, so that'll be in 2016. The next page is a page that I added for you for information going into the 2017 budget season. This is a look at the cash balances in the taxing funds and in the utility funds, based on what you expected to carry over in 2016. So that carryover difference column at the very far right-hand side shows that the General Fund is 1.1 million better than what we had anticipated. Bond and interest is a little down, at 133,755 down. I think all of you'll remember that we didn't get all of our ad valorem tax in, that we had requested, that's part of the reason that number's down. And another reason is the special assessment program that we have with John Chapel, we have to reimburse the specials. That is the only project currently doing that now, and that brings our special assessment revenue down just slightly.
Melinda, the, the, Finney County's error related to the ad valorem tax that we're absorbing, all of those would have impacted, so the other ones ended up more positive, even with that happening. So the only one that really couldn't make it up is bond and interest, and that's because it's fixed.
Limited, limited in its resources for revenue.
Okay, thanks.
The airport fund, that carryover difference, that $959,000, now, don't get too excited about that, because we're holding $666,667 in Kansas Affordable Airfare Program money. So when you subtract that out, they, they do have a very good balance going into 2016 at 292,955. That is a good number for the airport to have in their financials. The utility funds, electric, they're 3.2 million to the good on what we thought we would carry over into 2016. Water and service, 1.3. Solid waste is 325,000, and drainage utility is 44,000. So I think when you look at 2016 revised information in the utility funds, you're going to see some projects that were not completed in 2015, that are going to be carried over into 2016, so these funds will be used for those projects.
And this is separate from the reserve?
That's exactly right. The narrative on the, on the next page, you've seen in your monthly financials every month, this summarizes the end of the year, selected revenues, you'll see the city sales tax is 4.33% ahead of 2014. County sales tax is 2.79. The utility fund graph that I really like looking at is the, the one on the electric that you get to see every month. It really shows you a comparison. Even though the revenues were pretty steady, you can see where that wholesale electric expense really went down compared to 2014.
What's the total on that? Oh, is it on here?
It's right here.
Is it on? Oh, okay, there it is.
And then we also have the other utilities shown there in graphs compared to 2014. The next page is the city clerk's report. I think we've gone over most everything in the utilities and in the general fund, based on those cash balances. As you know, special revenue funds have a certain purpose for them. We do have the capital projects funds that are all still ongoing. There is one item cleared out at the bottom under internal service funds. Once we got the year closed out and had all of the bills in, the health insurance fund had a very healthy cash balance in it, so we were able to transfer 475,000 into the health insurance reserve to help us in future years. So the reserve now has 1.35 million in it. That's more than we've had in that reserve for a while.
And it's a far less volatile fund than it was when we were self-insured. So the safety net that the reserve provides now is a very real safety net. Before, we had one and a half million in there, and as self-insured, that's one claim away from disappearing. So now that we're a fully insured plan, and out on the private, private market like most employers, having that kind of a reserve helps, helps smooth out the peaks and valleys of premium renewal, which is a good situation to be in.
The next few pages has your general fund revenues, and as you can tell, on ad valorem tax, 30, 40, that does show an $87,000 negative amount that wasn't collected, that we had anticipated getting. The other items that are in red, some of the larger ones, would be our fines in municipal court, those are pretty well leveling out. We need to take a look at how we budget those in the future. And that's about it on those revenues. You do have a listing of all of the general fund departments in total, and if you can look at that page, you can see that every department was in the black, which meant that they did not overspend what they were authorized to spend in 2015. So capital improvement is a negative amount, but that has some other things in it. But as far as the ones that have staff, they control their budgets very well, and I want to come in down for that, that's what helped in the cash balance carryover. Is there any questions that I could answer? I think it is good to maybe take a look at this quarterly and discuss it in an open meeting quarterly, so that if you have any questions, you can ask them at that time for the rest of you to hear. It's important to have this financial information in front of you every month, but I think quarterly as a discussion is probably something I would recommend.
It sounds like a great idea.
Right.
Commissioner's, item seven D, no, I'm sorry, seven E is the sales tax report that Melinda provides as well, as you can see, that January was up 4% over January 2015, which is a positive, certainly a positive thing. Looks like the countywide was up a tick too from the previous year, but 543,000 was the total proceeds, over the city's 1%, which is over, which is, last year was 521. I think item seven F is a presentation of the December's activity report from the, from the fire department. I don't believe there was a presentation on this, was there? No, if you have any questions, I'm sure Chief would be happy to answer those. If not, item seven G is a presentation of the fourth quarter report from the Public Utilities Department. And I don't believe there's a prepared presentation as part of this either, so if you've got any questions on that, Mike, we'll take a stab at it.
On the, on the water side, I know we've implemented the, kind of trying to reduce our water consumption. Bill Little, can you go down one, Matt?
One page?
Yeah, this one? Yeah, that one, right there. Are we, this is, is this for the whole year? Is that the graph for the whole year then? Is that what we're looking at?
Mayor and Commissioners, that's, that is correct. This shows our appropriations per well, and then it shows you the bottom, the bottom graph, the red and the blue shows how much of our total appropriations we used, and how much we did not use. The blue is, we still had 323 million gallons of water that we were appropriated, but we never used.
Okay.
So if I'm reading this right, we didn't, we didn't produce the industrial well, and we only produced 2% of the capacity of the drummer well?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, any other questions, Melinda?
That's what I needed to know. Okay, we're good. That was all my questions, so, thank you.
All right, thanks. Good luck in report, Mike. The, I don't know if you're, are you prepared to give the dates and times of the Rec Commission's public, this isn't on there, Mayor and Commissioners, but I think it's important to call attention to next week, the schedule that we alluded to at the last meeting, that, for the Garden City Recreation Commission Management Study. We've blocked out the day to meet with certain stakeholders and various stakeholders. We've also identified a couple of windows of opportunity that folks from the public who haven't identified themselves as being interested in a special or separate meeting, sort of a general, general all-call for anybody that wants to participate in that in Jennifer Scout those times.
So next week, Novak Consulting will be here, and they are doing meetings the night through the 11th. The times that we have open for community members to come, and they don't have to schedule that, would be on February 11th at 8:00 a.m., and on February 11th at 4:00 p.m. We tried to do one at the beginning of the day and one at the end of the day, so that we could accommodate as many citizens as possible. They are 45-minute time slots, so from 8:00 to 8:45, and from 4:00 to 4:45, they will be in the large meeting room across from the commission chambers, and they can bring stuff if they have stuff they want to bring, or just bring themselves some, and the two consultants will be here to meet with them.
Kind of an open forum, discussion on the rec?
Correct. Most of the other meetings are very tailored, so they have a specific interest group or a specific focus group that they're working with, and so those questions may be tailored. What I would also tell citizens is that on both the city's Facebook and on our website is a link to the survey. Novak Consulting is using the results from this survey to determine questions to ask community, community members, things that they're concerned about, or things that they're really happy about and they don't want to see changed. So if you want to come to one of those sessions, but also fill out a survey so that they can have some background before they get here, that would be great. If you don't have access to a computer, we also have hard copies here at the city admin building, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, I'd call your attention to the, to item eight, which is a listing of the meetings of note. Any of those requiring RSVPs, please take care of those through City Clerk Celine Potato. If there aren't any questions on any of those events, we're ready for item nine A, which is the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be number 2405-2016A.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2405-2016A.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
There are no ordinances or resolutions for your consideration, nor is there any old business. There are a few new business items, the first of which is your consideration and approval of funding for the Downtown Development Fund for 2016. Caleb?
You have the complete staff report in your, in your packet, the memo in regards to this, and I think most are familiar with it because it started too long ago, but just in review for everyone's benefit is, this fund was developed in, in 2015, and the Downtown Development Fund was created to offset or to fund the various expenses associated with development and revitalization of the central business district. This program was initiated to encourage the revitalization and the redevelopment of existing buildings and the development of vacant properties in the downtown Garden City, which is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan and downtown master plans of the city. You have attached a letter of support from the Downtown Vision and continued funding of this program. Also attached is the application overview sheet for the program. Can you just kind of give you some background of where, what's happened since our first approvals that have taken place? Since its creation, there have been a lot of interest in this fund. December 1st, City Commission, four completed applications were brought before the commission. And of all those projects, all those projects were awarded funds to assist them in their revitalization projects. Hutton Construction received $50,000 for their remodel, they are close to a final. Garnier received $50,000 for their remodel. A temporary certificate of occupancy has already been issued, and they're very close to receiving a final. El Madrid received $20,800 to put in a sprinkler system. That has been ordered and scheduled and is waiting for those parts to come in. Brown Shoes received a location there, their building, received $35,200 to reface their store front, and their permit has been approved, but they have not started construction at this point. We currently have one additional completed application and two other partially completed applications, with at least three others interested parties in this program. In 2015, the fund was established with $250,000. $200,000 was reserved for building costs, and $50,000 was reserved for professional fees. And the Downtown Development Fund does have 2015 carryover of $94,000, with $50,000 being reserved for professional fees and $44,000 reserved for building costs. If the governing body awards this fund at another, at an additional $250,000 for the 2016, the total funds would be, as shown on the chart, that is included on the report, and which would give a, a total including carryover of $344,000 for a total amount. The Downtown Development Fund is set up to reimburse owners for their improvements at 80% of their building costs, or building permits that they, for whatever the remodel or project is that they would be doing, and 50% of the professional fees. The annual amount budgeted for this program is, was $250,000. The program... The program was set up to have these funds separated with 200,000 limit on the building cost reimbursements and 50,000 limit on the professional fees reimbursements. With this program being well underway, staff has made an observation that it might be easier to administer the funds if they are lumped into one pool. In other words, not dividing the funds with the building costs and professional fees. Therefore, if the funds are renewed for 2016, staff would recommend that a total amount of 344,000 be reserved for either building costs or, and professional fees, and the distribution of these funds would remain at 80% for the building costs and 50% for the professional fees. As of all the first projects that we did receive, we didn't have any that applied to use that, any of their funding towards professional fees. The alternatives, we have four alternatives that were included. Alternative one would be to renew the funding for the Downtown Development Fund for 2016 at 250,000. $200,000 reserved for building costs, 50,000 reserved for professional fees. Alternative two would be renew the funding for Downtown Development Fund for 2016 at 250,000, with the entire amount being lumped together. Alternative three would be renew the funding for the Downtown Development Fund for 2016 at a different amount, or, and alternative number four would be not to renew the funding for the Downtown Development Fund in 2016. Staff recommendation would be alternative number two, which would be to renew the fund at 250,000 and keep the entire amount together for disbursement. The fiscal knows that the renewal of this program would take an additional 250,000 from the general fund for 2016.
And this money's coming from, I mean, we set aside for Starbon or what?
You're exactly right. We made a policy kind of decision last year that we wouldn't use the sales tax that would be generated out of the businesses that are in Starbon District, and so we transferred that money into this fund number 53, the project development.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the 250,000 for 2016 and lump it together, construction and fees.
So it'd be alternative number two?
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb.
Item 12B, governing bodies' consideration and approval to transfer ownership of fire department's surplus rescue equipment to Garden City Community College. And Chief?
Good afternoon. Fire Department is asking the governing body to transfer some surplus equipment that we have at the Garden City Fire Department. For the past five years, we've been, been in the process of replacing our low-pressure, worst equipment with high-pressure equipment. Reason for this transfer, or reason for the change of equipment is the manufacturing of cars today are not built like they were 20, 30 years ago. Therefore, the, the old equipment is not built to pressure to do the job in the field that we were needing to do. So therefore, we have purchased new equipment, which has caused us to have a surplus of the low-pressure equipment. Larry Panda with the Community College has asked if, if we could transfer that equipment to the college for the fire science program. He does have a need for it as far as training young firefighters, where we do not have a need for it anymore and actually sit in the back room at the Labrador Fire Station at this time. So therefore, we ask that you allow us to transfer that equipment to the Community College.
Mike Commissioner, we approve the transfer of ownership of the fire department's surplus rescue equipment, as noted in, in the packet, to the Garden City Community College.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item 12C, the governing bodies ask to appoint one member to fill the vacant seat on the cultural relations board. And I'll go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation.
Edith.
Edith Castillo to the culture relations board.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Item 12D, the Garden City Police Department is requesting some city commission's consideration and approval of Alyssa Ralston to serve on the police citizens advisory board as the high school representative.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Governing bodies ask to consider appoint one member to the Garden City Recreation Commission. It is just an overview, there are four members of the five-member recreation commission appointed by the city commission, with one member appointed by the other members of the recreation commission. The way they're constituted under state law, this position is currently held by Micah Bunch, who's ending her term and has expressed an interest in continuing her term.
I make a motion we appoint Micah Bunch to the Garden City Rec Commission.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried. And is there one more position that is expiring in February this year too? Anna? I don't have a single last name.
Yurichia.
Yurichia.
It says 2 of 16.
Hers is a four-pointed position.
Okay. 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 Thank you.
There's no changes to the consent agenda, so if you approve it, it would be items one through eight.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to set aside number two.
And I'd like to set aside number five.
So the items would be one, three, four, six, seven, eight for the consent agenda. Right, two and five are the ones we're pulling?
Yes.
To discuss? Okay.
I'll make a recommendation that we approve the consent agenda for F1, three, four, six, seven, and eight.
That's right.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
All right. Caleb? Item F2, I think it's F, maybe not. F2 is the consideration of the American State Bank share addition.
Do you have the staff report in your packet? Any questions that we could, this, this did go before the planning commission and their recommendation was included? Any questions?
Go ahead. I have, I have some. Number one, that whole area, how is that zoned?
That area is all zoned commercial, C2.
Okay, and that includes? Give it to you.
Yes.
Just about everything?
That's general commercial district. As you see the property, everything in red you see is C2. The lighter red is a different, is a different zoning district. It is the intent of this split of land that the Jax is purchasing that property, which is the back half of this, with the intent of adding parking lot to their facility. And that's the, the purpose behind the sale. The bank next door, or the, the bank owns the property, and they're, that is the, the purpose of this split is that we noticed that this property has had issues in the past, as you are aware of, that they've had issues with parking, not having enough parking, and other issues that, that have come up, that they're needing additional land to help alleviate some of those issues.
How's the egress-ingress going to be on that, on that added addition? Is that going to be through the alley?
I know it will be through Jax, through their park, through, because it, the debt is up against their property directly. If you scroll down to the next photo, it may get us a little closer.
That's messing with me.
Is that, so they're buying that whole lot there over to the street to the west?
No. The lot is being split.
Just the east.
Oh!
Picture that.
And I do have.
It's split out there.
They're putting a lot line here, which there, there's no, there is no alley on the properties to the back, so their, their access to this property will be through their parking lot, which will be an extension of their parking area that they have here. The area to the, to the north is residential, so they will be required, there is a, they have a privacy fence up there, but they're also required a buffer area that's required by the zoning regulations in between those two areas. There's no buffer area required in between other light commercial areas. It's our understanding that there might be some covenants that the bank is placing on the property, but that's a private, that's between them, the owner of property and their sale of property. Not what the city.
So they would go all the way back, right up to the residential fences back there?
That is correct.
Do we know how those people feel about this?
No, they're, they're, this property is commercial. They, those are, most of those are rental properties up there. There's no zoning change needed, so there's no requirement for notification.
There's nothing right now that would prohibit that from being in another business with parking all the way up to the fence.
Correct. They are required to have a buffer along this residential area, and a buffer would be along this area because it abuts residential on this corner. But that's the only requirement that's provided by city code, is to have those buffers there. And when they develop it, when they come in with a site plan for the development of this property, staff will be addressing those, those issues that may come up.
Well, I know that, I understand the fact that we can't change what, what the zoning permits them to do. My concern would be is, is one, the noise level that we're going to have back closer to the residence to the north, one, and what type of buffering area we're going to put back there. Number two, if, if in fact the driveway is coming out of their, through their main lot, they've only got one egress-ingress route into that, if I'm not mistaken, and they have to drive all the way through it to the north area to park. Now, when they, their whole idea of this is to be able to have more parking for outside entertainment. If they put that tent back there on the north side of the present lot that they have today, how are they going to have egress-ingress going through that tent?
Yeah, they will, in order for them to have events, they go through our process of reviewing that, because some of the issues we've had in the past was the tent location was blocking the actual driveway, the full width of the driveway. I think there were some issues that come up with that the last time that the tent went up. All those are reviewed when we go through it. When, when they do their special events, they will, they will go over that. I don't know what, how they're going to handle that. The whole property is probably not going to be all, all parking lot. They're going to have, they have a landscape requirement too that they have to meet, which is, which is, I believe, 10% of that. Plus, they're going to have to address the drainage issue. So the logical thing to do on most of that would be is to put that in part of their buffer back there in the back and push it away from the residential would be how we would suggest that good planning would get them to do that, but they have their, they, they have a right to go ahead and propose what they want, and then if they're not agreeable to the site plan requirements that are required, they can appeal that decision, the staff's decision, to the planning commission, and if they're not satisfied with that, they can, that can be appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Do we have a right to approve or disapprove on the, after they, their site manager, when they come and present that to you?
Yes, when they come in for the site plan, staff will review that. If it meets code and requirements, then we are obligated to approve that. If there is issues with that that aren't addressed, they are required to meet the code requirements that are there. If there's an impasse there that staff and them disagree on that, they have the ability to take that onto the planning commission to get their view of it, and they also have the opportunity to appeal that decision to the Board of Zoning Appeals if they so choose.
That's going to be based on objective criteria spelled out in the code, not on popular opinion on whether or not there might be an activity someday that creates noise that might be disruptive to somebody living in the residential property zone to the north though.
That's correct.
Right. So I think to your first question, how do we know how much noise? We don't. They're subject to the noise ordinance. They would be, I mean, it would be governed like any noise created on a C, what is it? One or two?
C2.
C2 property. Any activity on there is going to be louder than a empty field, or, you know, although, do they use this for their special, do they use this lot for their special events?
No.
Or the lot to the east? Yeah, so right now, this lot's probably not used for anything, so will there be a measurable increase if it, if a portion of it turns into a parking lot? Yes, but it would be still what was anticipated to be there when it got zoned C2 once upon a time, and I don't know how long ago that was, but certainly that property has been anticipated to develop commercially for some time.
Well, I, I think if they put that tent back there, we'll hear from those neighbors, I guarantee. I don't think you'll see that tent clear on the north end of that property lot. That's too far to carry beer and other stuff out.
Yeah, that probably wouldn't work for them either, so.
It's probably going to be up front. They're going to put it up front, but then if you put it up front, that takes up a large amount of space, which you say, it blocks the driveways, it blocks the entrance to go back there, and the next thing you know, if they don't put up some sort of a burr, them people are going to cut across.
Yeah. Yes, they're, they do, they are required to, any of those events, when a tent goes up, you know, the fire department checks on those things, the fire marshal checks on those things, staff, building codes are, are observed or are required to be observed, fire codes are required to be observed. All the ordinances that are in place are still required to be observed, even in a special event.
Thank you.
Good discussion.
I, I make a motion we approve the.
Number two?
F2. Number two.
I was just trying to. American State.
The final, final plat.
Second.
For, yeah.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
And item F5 is the consideration of the lot split of lots one and two of block seven of the Jones addition.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yes. My question was, the planning commission approved this preliminary plat with that the accessory building be removed?
Yes.
Okay, is that what is before this board?
Um, yes, this is the approval of their recommendation of that. The owner is aware of that and they have no problems with that, because they, their, their intent is to sell off the other lot. The issue of that existing structure that's on this side, which is a concern, is that it's currently built over an easement currently, and, and a new easement was actually added in that area as well, and so that's kind of the concern of that existing building, is that needs to be off of those easements because that can be very problematic. The owner is aware of that, they understand that, and they don't have any problems removing that building.
I move to approve number five, the lots one and two, block seven of Jones addition.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Thank you. No other business before the commission mayor. It's time for 13A, commission reports.
Commissioner Dale.
Okay. I want to thank everybody that was at the pre-meeting today. It was very interesting and a lot of good information was put out. I want to thank the staff that took the time to go back to, to Topeka and, and put everything they could for it to try to get everything across to those people. That's, that's. That's, I just give you a lot of praise and thanks for doing that. Girl Scout cookies, Matt? Bring them on. The, the monies for the downtown development thing appeared last year to be an excellent thing and I'm glad that we have the monies this year to be able to carry that forth and, and have that development downtown. Everything dependent upon, on how it goes, but if we can continue that for a long time, that would be great. I'm just going to take a few minutes. I had, had pre-written up a bunch of things referencing the trap neuter return program that I had thought after last week that I thought were things that when we advised the staff to write a new ordinance, we, they had no guidance, you know? And this whole thing was up in the air and it's, uh, so I've, I've got some list of things here that I thought that we have to look at and also have to be considered into the ordinance. One is the neuters, uh, in neutering them and the rabies in the vaccinations, when you trap them, they all have to be given their shots and that's going to be additional expenses. And also, uh, most, most veterinarians will tell you that you've got to repeat those shots every year, just like you would have had your domestic cat. So we have to look at how that that's going to be handled. The city registration, are we going to waive the city registration on cats and not allow them to have tags? Whereas if I have a domestic cat, I have to have that tag on my cat? That's a question the city has to answer. We can't go from one side to the next. Identification is very important. We have to be able to identify these cats for annual required shots and registrations because if we give it, other than the tagging of the year, in a year or two afterwards, if we have to re-catch that cat and, and give it another vaccination shot for a rabies, we have to be able to identify that particular cat. And that can be done through ear tags, tattooing numbers on the cat, or implanting a chip, more expense. Record keeping on the cats, you're going to have to have a record kept on, on cat, oompty up, oompty up, living at colony number four hundred somewhere, it's going to become a record problem, keeping track of these cats to be able to know where these colonies are and how many other. So it's, it is a big cost factor that's going to come into, to play. My question is, 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 they brought in last week the downtown segment of this as being where they wanted to do this, but now they want to do this citywide. Well, my question would be, the neighbors and in particular neighborhood may want them cats gone, period. And so you have to know what the property owners wants, the same way with the downtown owners of, uh, businesses downtown, they have to be willing to support the cat and they're going to have to be willing to want to put the money up and allow the cat there. They all have to be in agreeance with that, otherwise it won't work. I want to know how much more time it's going to take to be required of animal control who will be receiving these animals in most cases? Because do the volunteers going to go out every year and catch this, or every year or every two years and catch this cat? And how many times are they going to catch this cat before they finally get the right one to give a vaccination for? It's, it's just going to snowball. A lot of time and expense, uh, I think could be occurred to the city if we don't watch it. Liabilities, uh, if, if we in fact returned a, a wild animal, a neuter, or a cat that's never been a domestic cat back out there, once we neuter them, tag them, give them their shots, what happens if, if a child or somebody is downtown and they go to pet this cat, this cat bites them? Now, we're looking for a black cat. There's six of them down there. How are we going to find the right cat? Because if you don't find that cat, you cannot quarantine that cat to be able to determine whether or not this cat has rabies or not. If that's the case, then this child is probably going to have to go through some sort of treatment for rabies. That, that's not nice. The parent, the parents then would probably want to sue somebody. They certainly can't sue the person with a, a, a colony in their backyard because they probably don't have the money. But we who authorized these fixed cats to be running around may have the liability and that would come under your.
I think you'd be okay. Kansas Torque Claims Act would probably give us immunity from any liability, but it's certainly a consideration.
Yeah. And, and the pictures that this lady brought today, these were, you know, these are almost the same as, as me having my, my cats. The same thing, except I got somebody else to have them, you know, have all their shots and taking care of them. And they're not even, they didn't even have little tags on. So it's something that whenever the city comes around and puts this, they just can't push this thing out a week or two. There's going to be half a lot of thought going into this thing to be, to be able to, be able to vote on it and come up with a comprehensive plan that will fit in the city. I wish they'd have stuck around. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Fay, how's it?
Well, I need some stuff for the cats, Mom, now. I'm going to move on to, I congratulate Cole Wallinger on his award. I think that, that's pretty impressive and you think it's one in, in the whole United States. I congratulate him. That's awesome.
Commissioner Sessner.
Kind of echoing the other commissioners on Cole and all the staff actually on, on the great things that they're doing for the city. The street department today on clearing the snow and keeping the streets safe for our citizens during this storm that we had. Good job to them. I've seen them out, out and about, clearing the streets, so good job to them. And that's all I've got.
Well, I'd like to, to congratulate Cole on his award and his outstanding. And also I'd like to thank staff for the pre-meeting today and all the work they, they do to try and protect municipalities and home rule and the fact that they go out and share it with other communities in an effort to try and help, help all communities through the city. So thank you for your extraordinary efforts. That's all I have. So if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.